We have it right on here, okay. We're ready to take them.
They have it right on that?
Yeah.
Apparently so. The Miss Cos, Corona is probably American.
That's what I'm thinking. Okay, we're ready to do this. Call to order the March 12th, 2018 Latrobe City Council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will call Mr. Peet on speed. Mr. Waldmirey? Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot my moment of silence. Thank you. I don't have my glasses on. Thank you. At this time, I'd ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, to ask for guidance, or to just quietly relax. Thank you. Now, we'll call. Mr. Waldmirey?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Here.
Mrs. Waller? Here. Mr. Martha?
Here.
Mr. Bartel?
Here.
Here. At this time, I'd ask for the approval of the minutes from the February 12th, 2018 Latrobe City Council meeting. May I have a motion, please? Kelly, probably a motion. Okay.
I move that the minutes of the February 12th, 2018 meeting be approved and accepted, and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I second the motion.
Thank you both. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll ask for approval of the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the month of February 2018. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Martha Merson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Waldmirey. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have the citizens' request portion of our meeting with the four items that are related to the agenda. If anything you'd like to discuss with council on the agenda items, please go to the microphone, state your name and address. We will have time at the end of the council meeting to talk about other items that the public's interested in that is not on the agenda. Any agenda items discussed at this time? Okay. Committee reports. Finance committee, we don't have anything right now. Public safety and fire. It'll be you and Mr. Kelly. Sorry, we have new committees here. Public works. Jerry and Aaron here.
We met a couple of weeks ago, and Wayne and Mike Ross were our attention at our last meeting, at the prep meeting. We need to have a discussion about using capital reserves to replace the HVAC system and the section of the roof that was mentioned. One of the words that we've used is, we're in a critical position on some of these things. So, things that can't, pardon me if I'm wrong, Mike, but there are things that really can't wait perhaps till next year and the budget cycle then. We have to be prepared to take action on those.
So, we're going to get our list of those, or?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, we can.
Personnel committee. We've had a couple of meetings, and I talked to Jerry and Jack. I would like to have another personnel committee meeting after this with Wayne and the chief Boo Mar when we're done. Nothing else? I have nothing else to report there. You guys? Events committee, anything, Christine?
Well, the Friday after Easter, they're planting trees in town. So, anybody who has time is able to come down and help the revitalization committee. You can get ahold of Jared and do that. They're looking for all kinds of volunteers, so if you know any children's groups that want to come out. And then also, we also have the date picked for the Fred Rogers Family Day, Jim Knight. Put that under calendar. And I would just tell them to download it when I walk in. This night, it is full of resources with dates that are already planned. So, encourage your friends to look it through and mark their calendars. There's a lot going on in this area.
Thank you, Christine. And the showcase, that comes later. Any orders?
Bucked trees. I haven't had trees taken out from sidewalks. All bucked sidewalks. Are you putting in different, like, you know?
Yeah, we have been. I had the same problem. Yeah, they're putting in trees that are very different. We had an arborist. We had an arborist that, you know, they brought in an arborist, and I guess they're different kind of trees now that don't do that. Board authority reports. Anything? No? Department reports. Public works, Mike?
No report.
Chief Boo Mar?
Just want to report that we're having a lot of problems with the construction over there. Probably every half hour to 45 minutes, we'd get a call for a truck going the wrong way on the bridge. Large percentage of the time, they get hung up on the pylon there. We've had two accidents already in the last couple of days on the pylon. Why it's there, I don't know. It shouldn't be there, but it's here or there.
Mike, you were going to talk to PennDOT, did you?
Correct, yeah. We had a meeting this morning with Dominic from PennDOT. And basically, what he's going to do, in addition to additional signage, what we looked at is having the availability of PennDOT paying for having duty police officers, you know, position themselves prior to Unity Street in order to try to get the truck stopped, see where they're going, and make sure they're not going over that. Now, I think what we talked this morning, the chief's going to put together, you know, a schedule and try to figure that, you know, how he's going to work his officers and everything. And with that, with the signage, we're going to try this out, see if it works, go from there, and continue to try to fix the problem.
I just, for the heck of it, you know, did the drive again. Because, you know, you drive, we drive around, so you don't even see it. But it, I don't know what could more signs be doing, because there's a lot of signs.
Yeah, there is. I think there was a total of 11 coming from 30 down to the bridge. What we just discussed about, which was just brought up to me a little bit ago, is I'm going to talk to PennDOT tomorrow to see if they can put active work zone signage in place. What that does is, would, it would double the fine for work zone violation, I think, or, I'm not sure. Put something maybe to...
It doubles it.
Just, you know, any type of ideas, you know, trying to get the trucks not coming in?
I know this program, they don't make the average, that's the big program where they don't pay for police to like, and to basically control the environmental areas that they're working on. So, they agreed to do a week and see if we can narrow down the scope of when the most active time is, then we can go forward with the, narrow schedule. But they don't pay for it. They say the officer's overtime rate was a 5% at the end.
Anything else, chief?
You saw me from finishing my report, so why should I pursue?
I had a question about your report, chief, so you can go ahead.
Sit.
I had a question. Would you please finish?
That's fine.
No, I want to hear the rest of your report.
Mike addressed it about the officers working.
Do you have anything else you'd like to report?
Nope.
Anne?
I have no report.
Chief Brazili?
Yes, we've been busy. We've got a lot, probably 240-some calls already for the year, so we've been quite busy, whether it be with flooding and whatnot. So, quite busy, and if it continues this way, we're on a banner here, so, you know, that's good. That's all I have.
Thank you. Administration, okay, Zach, you're up.
First item on the agenda concerns the Latrobe GLSD Parks and Recreation Commission's use of the first ward park, including ordinance in the lease. This is a motion item, and the proposed motion is as follows. To authorize the solicitor to prepare a lease agreement to lease the first ward park to the Latrobe GLSD Parks and Recreation Commission, and to prepare and advertise an ordinance approving the lease.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare a lease agreement to lease the first ward park to the Latrobe GLSD Parks and Recreation Commission, and to prepare and advertise an ordinance approving the lease.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Yes. Now, initial lease agreement, we have the first ward park, Mr. Waldmirey, we do the write-up, Mike. We need to have something in the lease agreement that prohibits parking rights from shutting that down totally and gives the city the right to authorize the use of that. Is that something we can put in the agreement, or?
Uh, yeah.
You're the lawyer, Kelly.
Yeah, what I'll be doing is preparing the lease to reserve some rights for the city to use the park, and we'll just have to make sure that we draft that language in light of what the granting authority is going to want to see in the lease agreement. Because we are doing this to help them grant, get a lease, to get on their lease, or their grant. So, we'll just have to make sure that we don't take, you know, too much desescrie rights, that basically we'll have the overall right to use it on a daily basis.
Will we be able to see this agreement before we have to vote on that?
I guess. I'll prepare it and circulate it to council well ahead of the meeting and welcome, you know, any questions or comments they would have. All right, Zach, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda concerns the 2017 CDVG paving project. The resolution is entitled "Awarding the 2017 CDVG Paving Project to Tresco Paving." This is the 2017 project, and the bid was $95,780. And this concerned, I believe, the railroad trusses on the military.
Is it, it's a paving project?
Oh, it's just a paving project, okay.
It was one they couldn't complete last year because of the weather.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. Is there any question?
Mike, you're fine with this? Do you want Tresco to let's go with this?
Yes, yeah. We looked at the bits back, and the intersection was the main thing. They're going to be excavating everything, putting in a base, you know, the binder, putting it up to our specs and topco, so it's, I think we're going to do a good job on it.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller? Yes. Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution entitled "Autorizing the City of Latrobe to Apply for a Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Grant to Purchase Equipment." Specifically, the grant application will be requesting funds for a leaf vacuum machine and a skid loader. And again, this is a grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection.
May I have a motion to authorize the resolution?
I'll make a motion. It's outlined by the solicitor.
Thank you. Mr. Bartel, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Waldmirey. Any questions?
Mrs. Waller? Yes. Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution entitled "Authorized Official for the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Municipal Statistics Program." Specifically, this resolution will have the city secretary as the E-fileer for the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Municipal Statistics Program through the governor's center for local government services.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Martha. May I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Ford, question? Is this for the census, or is it just for liquid fuel?
It's on normal planning, annual planning.
It's just changing the name, basically?
Yeah, basically taking the larva off.
Okay.
It's really just a housekeeping thing.
Okay. Mr. Baycom? Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution entitled "Enrollment in the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation DocGrants Program." Specifically, this resolution would allow the city of Latrobe to apply for enrollment in the DocGrants program, and authorizes the manager and secretary to prepare the necessary application documents for the mayor to sign.
May I have a motion, please, to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Waldmirey. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Waller. Question? Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution entitled "Approving the Latrobe GLSD Parks and Recreation Commission Grant Application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Services." Specifically, this resolution is essentially a resolution that supports the Parks and Recreation Commission's application for a grant for the first ward park, and it also authorizes the city to use the money that it has been retaining from the original, I think that was the fourth ward park sale.
The athletic field.
Originally, there was $200,000 set aside in the account for Parks and Recreation. That was since, the resolution creating that fund was since amended to allow them to use the funds for park-related purposes. Approximately $13,000 has already been used from that account. So, the city will be potentially matching up to $187,100.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Waldmirey. Questions?
I just have one comment. The resolution that was circulated last week, we made a quick amendment to it today, which...
They all have yours, except for you, Bill, because you discussed it on Friday. Can I have revised one for you actually?
It's a minor revision, and it just limits the match to that $187,100. It's specific, you know, we heard it before, but we put it in to be specific today.
Questions?
Yeah, just one. But after putting the $187,000 in, does that mean Tony's first ward is going to get fixed with?
No, that's, I think it's basically the grant covers first ward, but other work is going to be done. I'm not sure if that grant is going to cover the other components. I'm not sure what the grant's being written. But the grant definitely is for the first ward, but they do show a schedule of stringing it up, but...
Correct. Yeah, that's what I was concerned about.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure how it's being written.
Question? What other question?
Yeah, when would we know?
Well, I guess Craig, Craig raised the grant. All I've originally done here is to put these four left together, but, you know, we didn't know.
Jared, did you know anything off that from the press meeting?
No, absolutely not. We'll find out when we meet, sir.
Jared should be able to tell us by the agenda prep. But if I remember certainly correctly, this is kind of a matching grant, so they're going after like $200,000, $250,000.
Yeah, I think they give a schedule.
They have a list of things.
Yeah, they give a schedule of things they want to change.
Right.
You know, it's covering a lot of parks.
Okay.
We can provide that.
Any other questions?
Well, originally supposed to notify us, but they was spending that $200,000 on, the council needed...
They did.
They did put a schedule together here, and they had a schedule together. Now, as far as how did, the question was how the grant's specifically written. I don't know specifically how it's written. But they did provide a schedule, and I can talk forward as to y'all.
But were you talking about the $13,000 spent? Because we approved that.
Yeah, we approved the $13,000, but it was the rest of the allotment.
Right.
They specified what they were going to spend. I just want to make sure. They're still following our check, but they told us one time in council, and we all agreed to.
Right, they gave you a list of what they were going to spend it on. To my knowledge, that's what they're following.
One more thing.
Yes?
Well, I don't agree with everybody on that list. So, I thought they were coming to us when they were going to spend major amounts of money, so we could do that.
Thank you. Again, that's up to council how they want to handle it. We certainly have Craig coming, maybe I'll come into the agenda meeting and sit down and discuss.
Wayne, do you know when they need to have our support by December deadline?
They want the letter by the 26th week, but I don't think the grant is actually being... I think we have time to generate.
I know the grants do in April, but I'm not sure when in April. We have an agenda meeting before that, so...
Yeah, that's right. Those are going to be a little... You know, we can certainly have enough time to have Craig come on to generate.
My only concern is that, well, our next voting, if it's passed on for some reason tonight because of what Mr. Bartel's bringing up, would there be enough time for it to be acted on in the April meeting, or would we have to notice the agenda prep is in action?
If I understand correctly, we're just approving, we're just sending them a letter of support for their grant application, correct?
Yeah, that's what the letter of support says. Basically, it is a, the city supports them in this effort to get a grant from the DC. And I don't think it's specifically set for a court, was it, by grant?
Right, and so I think what happens is, depending on whether or not they get the grant, will determine what projects they do and how much of the projects they do. Because if they get the grant, then they're going to have twice as much money. So, my recommendation would be that we approve the recommendation letter, but that doesn't mean that we aren't going to talk to them more about what they're going to do. So, I would, I'd ask for a vote. Okay, Ms. Peet?
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is entitled "Authorized Official Resolution Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Grant." This resolution would request a multi-modal transportation fund grant of $100,000 from the Department of Transportation to be used for the improvement of three Norfolk Southern Corporation railroad underpasses located within the city.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Martha. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Waldmirey. Questions? Mr. Bartel?
Yeah.
You have a question?
To what extent are we looking for the approvals on this? Now, I know here's back there, we compare the possession of, keeping it clean, and lighting, and, you know, this is back from first term account.
This multi-modal grant we applied for last year, and we did not get it. So, we're basically reapplying the same grants for sidewalks, it's for railing, it's for repairing the posts that are cemented. It's really, it's like a handicap, handicap...
Handicap accessible.
Yeah, it's really, we're not doing anything for the railroad per se, but we're doing it for the sidewalk and the railing and everything.
Lights, too?
Thank you, Wayne.
Yeah, we take the lights on LEDs.
Yeah.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Peet? Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mrs. Wald?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is entitled, a resolution entitled "Appointing Members to the Latrobe Planning Commission." This resolution would appoint Linda McKenna-Box to the Latrobe Planning Commission with a term to expire January 31, 2022.
Make the appointment of Linda McKenna-Box to the Latrobe Planning Commission? Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
The next item is a resolution entitled "Appointing Members to the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board." This resolution would appoint James R. Miller to the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board with set term to expire January 31, 2023.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor? Appointing Mr. Miller to the zoning hearing board.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Waldmirey. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Waller. Questions? Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
Moving on to Police Department. This is a resolution establishing a handicap parking space on Chestnut Street. Our code allows for handicap parking designations to be done. By resolution, it'd be confirmed at the end of the year by ordinance. This resolution would create this space adding seven to the four Chestnut Street, directly in front of the main entrance to the applicant's residence.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. Mr. Bartel, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Questions? Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Waldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Martha?
Yes.
Mrs. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Walter?
Yes.
That includes the agenda items. Moving on to unfinished business. Wayne, I know you and I talked about it, but I signed a check today for the reimbursed and voided fuel account.
Yeah.
Is everyone aware of that?
Well, they, I don't know. We faced it back in 2014, when Joe Bush was still part of our director. They had bid the snow removal, and the gentleman that bid the snow removal didn't show up. So, Joe called Piper, and Piper filled in. Well, they continued to bid the snow removal for that season, and we were written off by Liquid Fuel because we didn't bid. Given that I personally believe it's an emergency, but I argue with them, but it's irrelevant. The point is, we had to move 25,000 from the general fund to Liquid Fuel, but we don't lose that money. That money is going to be spent on Liquid Fuel in the future, so it's just, to me, it was unnecessary audit, but, you know, it is what it is.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, it was 25,000 and some change, but basically...
It wasn't really a fine, it was a reimbursement, we had to pay them back for the $25,000 we used.
Right, they're saying that the $25,000 we spent shouldn't have been spent without a big bid. Okay, they know we have to have snow removal, but, so, we put it back in the pot, and we just spent it. If anything, they gave you 25,000, comfortable.
Okay. So, basically, we just have to move it from one fund to another.
Yeah, this is a transfer.
In simple terms, if you're not a CPA, we just move it from one place to another. Thank you, Wayne.
It's, you know, the audit sometimes it gets them out of the person very, but sometimes they get overly into...
Okay.
You get hit next year now for standing up.
That guy's retiring, so...
Yeah, he did retire. No, our audit next year is so smooth that it...
How do you know?
Because we already prepared it.
Oh.
2017 is so smooth, there's no way they can possibly find anything. Not on my report.
All right, you know you're on tape.
I'll stand by.
I'm sure you will. I'm sure it'll be fine. Any other unfinished business items?
Yeah, we talked about the plaza down below, the parking garage. Yeah, we talked about the plaza down below, the parking garage.
Yeah, we got a tentative price. Now, of course, we have to go up a bit. We got a gentleman that kind of gave us a ballpark number, 160,000 dollars.
Oh, my.
To do, I, to redo the, we haven't seen the drawing yet, but I'm assuming he wants to redo the whole course and put a handicap ramp there. We can't. We're going to have to see what we can do, and see if we can have some contribution to that. You know, for the law. We could do business. We're hoping the business might help put some money into that courtyard, but then 150,000 dollars, we can't afford.
I was going to ask, what's in that? What's in that?
They expanded their business down there. They got Dennis to go over that whole lawn.
Yeah, the courtyard's huge. I'm not saying it's just not important, but 160,000 dollars...
Does the whole thing need done, or they're just...
Well, I think for 160,000, they put a brand-new surface, and the handicap grant has to be done, and the stuff needs to be repaired, but whether the entire cement patio needs to be done, you know, that's an argument for a debate.
Okay. Anything else under unfinished business? Any new business? Anyone have anything that they would like to talk about? Any citizens' requests? Anything from, yes, ma'am?
I do. I have a parking issue. My name's Shelley. I live on 131 West Tacoma Avenue. Since I moved in two years ago, it's been an ongoing issue. It's either hospital employees or the residents, whatever. I myself, the neighbors, I have to sign petitions from all my neighbors. We've called the hospital, administration, security, nobody does anything. I've had them pull in front of my house six thirty in the morning. The Taff Avenue lot has not a car in it.
We talked about this once before.
I've written several letters. I mean, they park, we have the driveway that goes off to Tacoma Avenue. We have three cars in my family. I don't think it's unrealistic expectation to be able to park in front of your house. These aren't just, some of them are there 12 hours, some of them are there till 9:30 at night. I work in Pittsburgh. I have my kids text me, "If you're not coming home soon, you'll have to park." They're halfway down the street.
We talked about permit parking there. We used to have permit parking there, and then we took it down because...
I'm not sure why it was taken down, but it was taken down, you know, a few, couple years ago.
So is it something we should...
But it's over on Joanne Drive, not from the employee lot.
It's going to get, for the short term, you know, they're taking down the park road.
I mean, this was bad.
They're going to put a surface lot in?
Yeah. Yeah, they put the surface lot in, and I think they're going to have some more parking in around the corner. So when they're done, they'll be a little better.
Parking garage really is a moving point. The fact that that's out of commission, like I said, I moved in two years ago, it's ongoing. Some days are worse than the other. Now, I thought when they opened up the new building, the group of residents that were there Thursday and Friday, eight and 10 cars of them, they left into New Brook Inn. Now, I work in Pittsburgh. I go to all the city hospitals. That's the only hospital that all the neighboring homes are not protected with a resident-only permit parking.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I don't see any reason why we can't put them back. We have them there for years.
I even offered, I said, "I'll pay for the signs in front of my house." You know? It's worth, you know, every bit of my blood pressure not going up every time I try to park.
You know, though, if we do put those signs up, you still have to call. I mean, they're not going to police it.
I get it, but it's a start.
Right, right. So you have to call and...
I mean, I have a lily bag that I have to get in my trunk. Thursday days, they're up against my truck. I can't even get in my own trunk.
Oh, my.
And I know, because some of the police and I, you know, are all aware of it. I mean, these big trucks right at the end of the driveway, both sides, and you know, trying to get out, but they're, they're the most brazen people. And it's 10% visitor. The rest are employees, and it's weekends, too.
What's right here?
I'm the first house right outside of the Taff lot, so it's just prime real estate
there, you know? It's like an open invitation.
They probably start selling your lot.
And honestly, they're starting to call Carol and...
I don't know if you can write a letter to the hospital and let them know what's going on.
Please try, like I said, I've called numerous times. They don't want to do anything. My other neighbors have called. Occasionally, I get a nice person in security, and he would say, "That's because they don't want to pay to park close."
They have to pay to park?
To park close, yes. It's $40. The one down, the lockdown in Joanne is great.
Their lot. Or our lot.
Well, they have a lot of lawyers.
Yeah, I know. Well, they could be telling their employees, and their employees aren't going to pay.
And that was my point. Tell these students, too, because there are a lot of out-of-state places. There's St. Vincent's students in for the medical, you know? They're, they have to be pleased by them. They're going into your building. You have a say where they should be parking.
Right. Permit parking seems to be like...
Yeah, we look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Joyce Graham, 108 Allen Street. I have a lot of problems with kids outside my house, and last year I was told by the police that there is no curfew because Latrobe is too safe. They're not allowed to have a curfew. Is that correct?
If there were, you don't want that.
There's no curfew. That wouldn't be the reason.
Well, some of these kids are like three years old, and it'll be between two and four in the morning. There was a group of four kids, and they were, I'm present here in church, and they were sitting out there for several hours with their backs up against the church, and they run into the stream. I know it's apparent. I've learned more about crime from the little kids who are not with their parents, but nobody's watching. Police officer I called, wouldn't do anything.
There's no curfew. We don't enforce a curfew.
Is it possible to get one?
I don't know. I mean, what would, what should she do in a situation like that?
I mean, being disruptive.
Like the other screaming and...
Everybody can call 911 and report it.
I did report it, and I was told, do they have a right to be there? There's a curfew.
Did the police respond?
Yes. That's who told the police officer.
Were the individuals still there when the police stuck there?
Yes.
Did you think of names or anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
When was this?
Last late summer, probably.
Okay.
Continue, I was just calling 911. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Ralph, can you remind me of Wall Street? Get some background information on why we are leasing the first ward fields, so Park and Recreation.
Got it. I'll let us know if you can make that.
Ever since Parks and Recreation became an independent entity, I believe it was 2006, does that make sense?
About right, 2000.
The Parks and Recreation Commission was an intermunicipal organization with the surrounding townships, the school district, and the city. So they were separated from the city's administration, but they continued to operate all of the parks that are owned by the city, and they have done so for the past, you know, 15 years. The reason why we're thinking about putting a lease into effect is, number one, I think historically we thought there was a lease, which would make sense to allow them to continue to use it. Now that it came to the forefront, because they're trying to get grants that would apply, the Parks and Recreation Commission is trying to get grants that would apply to the first ward park, and the grant, you know, the granting authority would want to show that they had some sort of legal possessory interest, which a lease would provide.
So we eventually are going to need to lease all of the parks?
I mean, the parks that the Parks and Recreation Commission is already operating on, if they don't have a written lease, they certainly would have an oral lease.
I think that's the only one left that the city owns.
We have a, we have a, we have a, you know, they do the... What's that one?
Oh, yeah, what's that called? Louisville, by Louisville there?
Yeah, we have that one. To your point, I think the lease helps determine liability because of...
I'm just wondering why we're just focusing on first ward, and what about the others?
Well, I think we're, you know, once we have, we still have...
Okay. Okay, a couple other things. I know the pylon is a real problem. I've seen the trauma at the bridge whenever this might come rolling through. Signs, I don't think there's going to stop them. Why don't we just remove the pylon? And even just for the duration or the duration of the construction, and then put another one back. I mean, it's, it's a little long in the tooth. I mean, it seems...
That's actually Pendleton's plan, but they've started their plan right now to remove that power, and they don't want to remove it until it's time to remove it and then replace it. We did discuss that with them when we did the original build design on it. They wanted to eliminate it, and as council members that was here, it's like, you can't take that. That's an iconic thing. More or less, it's in there, waiting before hot time, waiting for your time.
Absolutely.
And it's the right house. It is, what they tell us, the, they estimate the pole over there, let's see there.
Twelve feet?
I think it's twelve feet, the ground running. It's a major thing to get it up out, and it's not that part of the design of the building brick yet. Because that whole area right there, well, that's all, that's all going to be called.
So we can expect sometime in the future, another construction bottleneck as they remove the fault after the building's done?
I'll address this.
Okay, final thing. I was looking on the website for the posting of the minutes of the meetings. They aren't there. They haven't been there since April last year.
You're correct, and unfortunately, we have problems with the website. We're actually looking to see about getting a new website put together, because not only is that not there, but the budgets aren't on there, there are a number of things that are on, that should be on there, that we've had difficulty getting put on. So we're looking for a more interactive, like a better word, website. Yeah, you're right, it should be there. I agree.
I mean, I assume this is something that's outsourced, it's not...
Right. It's provided by an outside vendor, and we're having difficulty facing the, I'm not sure if it's communication or whether, we've had difficulty in the past. The prior city secretary, I think she lost some hair trying to get the gentleman to do what she had asked.
Could we turn this over to the school district and let them make a specific project? We've got computerized kits. It probably, Latrobe Elementary could do this, and it would be a part of the curriculum or part of the computer club, which is monitored by a teacher.
And we can, we can, we can, St. Vincent's also, you know, helps with that, too. And we're basically just starting looking to see what's available, but obviously, the biggest thing is the cost, and the value, the value added of having...
I think the design isn't, you know, isn't the problem, it's the option.
And that's where you turn it over to the school.
I think...
Well, it's not being posted now for the last 12 months, so three months in the summer is not a big deal. And if you go with a college, that's not a problem either. But there's always a teacher or a proctor involved in like the computer club or something like that, that basically wouldn't be able to provide a site.
Well, I think it's more than just updating with the minutes at this point. I'm not even sure, and I have my background. We're not even being told where it's being posted. We're not being told where the files are, PDFs that have to go up, so it's not just saying, hey, smart kids, that's high school, you know, if we could do this. So it is a big... We have to start from ground zero again. That's what I'm saying. But I think to his point, maybe that could be a project.
Yeah, yeah. So we have to turn, the monitoring is good, but we can't just say, hey, let's start adding, because we don't even know that's not posted. We haven't told them what we need.
Yeah, I...
We're falling into...
Because you're correct, it needs to be updated. Good idea, we'll look into that. Any other questions? Any other citizens' comments? City managers' report?
Just real quick, I want to thank Mike and Ann for the work that they did on the DEP grant, because it started out with the leafback machine, and due to their work with the DEP, they've thrown in a skid loader and a couple of boxes into the grant. So it's due to their effort that they, we've gotten, it looks like we're going to get some nice new...
Nice job, guys. Thank you. Nothing's free.
Free.
Most are free.
But they, they reduced grade on the grant, so...
Right.
I'm afraid.
Any else, Wayne? Mayor's report. I just want to remind everybody again that tomorrow's election day, so vote, vote, vote. I want to thank and recognize Chief Lamar for doing a really great public service for people, businesses, and churches, and daycare centers, and he did a program for active shooters, everything you probably saw in the newspaper. It was very, very well done and very well received by many of the residents. I thank him. Anybody have anything? Little bit of room? Okay, with that in mind, I'll ask for a motion for a adjournment.
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.